I now call the Monday, May 13th, 2019 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Prescott Valley to order. I'd like to ask Commissioner Gary Roberts to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Chair Larry Rankin. Would you please rise?
Father God, I want to thank you that we can meet together and go through the suggestions and requirements that are made before us and give us the wisdom and knowledge we need to do the work that we have to do. And we ask for understanding and reasoning. Amen in Jesus' name.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its name, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutherford? Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Here, yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
Chairperson Zercher?
And here.
This time, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March 11th, 2019 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 11th, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, moving on. Before I give my opening spiel, are there any announcements? All right, seeing none. Good evening. My name's Matt Zercher. I'm the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I will be presiding over this evening's deliberations on hearing items before the commission this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an all-volunteer body and sits in an advisory capacity to the town council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the commission has initially reviewed the application, the floor will be open for a comment. This time, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After this point, I will open the floor for public comment regarding the planning case before the commission. I will ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, as I may exercise the prerogative to confine public comment if need be, and I will be doing that this evening, to three-minute intervals per person, considering we have four public hearing items on the agenda this evening and a lot to cover. Also, this evening, we will be hearing ZMC, Zoning Map Change 19-001, and Preliminary Development Plan 19-001 together, as well as Zoning Map Change 19-003 and Preliminary Development Plan 19-002 together. Our public comments with regards to the zoning map change and preliminary development plan for both of these items will take place during the public hearing. During the action item part of the agenda, we will take separate votes on the preliminary development plans. So with that, we'll get on to item number seven, which is public hearing items. The first item on the agenda is Zoning Map Change 19-001. Upon the application of Grounds Properties LLC, Care of Pacific RH LLC, consideration of a zoning map change from R1L70 Residential Single Family Limited to RSPAD Residential Sales and Services Planned Area Development on approximately 48 acres located east of Highway 69 and south of Bradshaw Mountain Road. And then also, let me read also into the record, Preliminary Development Plan 19-001, upon the application of Grounds Properties LLC, Care of Pacific RH LLC, consideration of a preliminary development plan for proposed 288-unit apartment development on approximately 48 acres. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, this is a request for a zoning map change on approximately 48 acres located at the southeast corner of Bradshaw Mountain Road and Highway 69. Existing zoning to the west is C2. Existing zoning to the south is RSPAD. There's also some RSPAD existing to the east as well on the south side of Bradshaw Mountain This graphic is the original 2003 Quailwood Meadows Preliminary Development Plan. It is rotated, so north is to your left, and originally, the property at the southeast corner of Highway 69 and Bradshaw Mountain Road was planned for commercial use. This shows where the subject property, this rezone, is in the black shape there. The proposal this time is for multifamily, R2, as opposed to commercial. This is a page from our general plan 2025. This shows a PAD 5-2 designation on about 1,700 acres, covering most of the southeast portion of the town and a good deal from the east. Subject property is located, again, southeast corner of Bradshaw Mountain Road and Highway 69. The PAD 5 in the general plan is described with the character of offering diverse housing, commercial, office, and employment opportunities. Land uses would include medium-high-density residential, and the rationale for the higher densities and more intensive uses in this location is proximity to the highways 69 and 169, which provide excellent commercial and living opportunities. This is another excerpt from the general plan. This is the circulation plan. Again, the subject property located at the southeast corner of Bradshaw Mountain and State Route 69. In the circulation plan, it is planned to continue Village Way to the south from Bradshaw Mountain Road to connect to Highway 169. And part of that would also be to have an additional connection over to Kachina Road from there, and that would create a secondary arterial through that location, which is fairly critical because there are no duplicate routes, duplicate arterials through there. This is the site plan proposed by the applicants, and again, this is rotated, so north is to your left. The first phase would contain 114 units. Access to this first phase would be from that new arterial road, rather than from State Route 69 or from Bradshaw Mountain Road. That arterial road would be constructed, or half of that arterial road would be constructed by the developer with a temporary turnaround at that first entry point. Also, part of the first phase, staff is recommending a condition that the developer construct a road that serves as an emergency egress easement and a roadway out to Highway 69, which would serve the first phase as well as the second phase. Second phase is proposed for 98 units, for a total of 212 units, and access likewise would be from the arterial road. The applicant would be, under our proposed conditions, would be required to construct half of that arterial road from Bradshaw Mountain Road all the way down to the southern boundary of the property and provide a temporary turnaround at that second access point. One of the things proposed by the applicant here is to widen a portion of Bradshaw Mountain Road to create two westbound lanes from State Route 69 almost all the way back to the bridge, which would allow for greater stacking and greater capacity in those areas. And these are some elevations that are proposed. These show the single detached bungalow-type units, as well as the duplex-type configurations. And the process from this point, for the information of the audience and the commission, is for the, that after decision tonight, the zoning map change would go to the town council for consideration. It would go for a public hearing and a first reading, scheduled now for the 23rd of May, and then a second reading and possible ordinance adoption would be on June 13th. And at some point, either on June 13th or at some later date, the applicant could also bring in a final development plan, which would have to conform with the preliminary development plan that's been presented to you. Staff recommends approval. It is congruent with the general plan 2025.
I should have asked, can you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm Gary Davis with Community Development.
Gary, thank you. Are there any questions of staff from the commission?
Gary, are the road widenings coming off of 69 past the project, are they part of Phase 1?
Yes, I believe so. We can check with the developer. The developer is here to give a presentation. We do have a video that the developer would like to present as well, and I'll cue that up right now as they come forward.
Are there any other questions of staff?
I have none.
Okay. At this time, Gary, before you start, I'll have the applicant come up and have them introduce themselves, and we can kind of cue the video from there. So, gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind?
My name is Chris Harrison. I'm the vice president of field operations and land development for Dorn Homes. Dave Grounds, the owner of Dorn Homes, wanted to be here this evening. His mother recently passed away, and he's in the process of leading her funeral at this very moment. Dave was very passionate about the project, and we've listened to the neighbors, our first neighborhood meeting, lots of negativity, lots of negative comments. We went back, scrapped the whole plan, and started anew. Went from three-story apartments to singles-level units. Went from 288 to 212, so a significant decrease in overall scale, density. We addressed the traffic issues that we heard loud and clear from the homeowners and the
Good evening, chairperson and commissioners, neighbors, community leaders, town leaders. My name's Dave Grounds. I'm the owner of Dorn Homes, and I apologize that I'm not there this evening. My mom died recently from a heart attack. It was unexpected, and tonight, I'm leading her funeral service in the Phoenix metro area. It's one of the few things that kept me from being there tonight. So please know that I'm with you in spirit, and the message that I'm going to share with you is a summary of our proposed project, and Jeff Kreitzer will be there among other Dorn leaders.
It's possible to crank the volume a little.
So they can add answers to any of your specific questions, but I wanted to touch on a few things. Number one, Dorn Homes recognizes that one of the town's missions is to create more housing options for residents that want to live in Prescott Valley. So we're aware of that, and we're trying to address that and do our part to address that. And one of the ways that we're doing our part to address that is to propose this new community. When we first proposed this new community, which resides next to the Family Dollar Store on the freeway, Highway 69, we thought that land was best suited for high-density apartments. They were going to be three stories. They were going to be 35 feet high, and it seemed like a transitional product, meeting a highway, Highway 69, and being next to a Family Dollar Store. And we then held the neighborhood meeting. And at the neighborhood meeting, we received a large amount of resistance from the neighbors. Recognizing why there's a neighborhood meeting, we did the best thing that we could, is we listened. And we listened, we think, in the most powerful way possible, is we went back to our office after that neighborhood meeting, and we scrapped everything, everything, and we started all over, out of respect for the people that live in Quailwood that had concerns. And so we have now started over, and we have proposed a brand-new community that will reside next to the Family Dollar Store. In addition, we're improving the current traffic on Bradshaw Mountain Road, so we're improving the situation that exists there right now. We're adding another lane, and we're increasing the capacity and the flow on that road, over and above what capacity we're going to be adding onto the road by our new proposed development. Our community will be self-sustaining. It's going to have its own amenities, and our residents will not be allowed to use the Quailwood amenities at the Quailwood Recreation Center. We're going to do things like a dog park, and we'll have a pool, and we'll have a luxury, almost like a campus, where people can enjoy themselves at that location. We're going to have 50% open space. So we could have added a lot more density to the site. We chose not to, and we're going to leave the area with a lot of open space. We currently do not own this land. If our zoning is not approved and this project does not go forward, we are going to walk away from this deal, and my only concern for the Quailwood residents is be careful what you wish for, because the landowner is very motivated to sell this and see this developed. And there's a lot of apartment developers looking for land along the corridor of Highway 69. We care about the Quailwood residents. We're the builder in Quailwood. We have a vested interest in taking care of the people that live at Quailwood. In closing, again, I want to apologize that I couldn't be there this evening. Our team is there, so the specific questions that arise from my introduction, we're here to answer. Thank you for your consideration. We're really excited to help create more product type for the Town of Prescott Valley. Have a great evening.
This time, I'll entertain any questions from the commission of the applicant? All right, seeing none. What we will do is open the floor for a public hearing. Again, we're going to entertain comments on both the zoning map change and the preliminary development plan. I'm going to ask that you keep comments with regard to renters to yourself, as they will not be permitted here this evening. What will be permitted will be a frank discussion of the facts and merits of this case that have been presented. And just as a reminder, three minutes per speaker. Please speak into the microphone and state your name for the record. If you support or oppose, please be specific as to why, and please do not repeat what others have already said. With that being said, if you can kind of just do, you know, stand in a line right down in the middle, we'll just start from there.
I tried to submit this, but I couldn't. They closed it off early. There are some inconsistencies.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
This is Paula Deal, Quailwood resident. There's inconsistencies to what Dorn has proposed during the Quailwood meeting and what is submitted in the PDP. There's no confirmation that there's a dedicated right-hand turn for the apartment complex. There's only the two lanes, the left-hand turn lane, and they're extending the double lane that merges into a single lane before you make a right-hand turn into this new complex. Right now, there is only a gravel walkway to the right of Bradshaw Mountain for the entrance where it's going to be developed. Kids use this to walk to school. People walk their dogs. People walk in the mornings. People bicycle. This is a very slim road for people to access. Second, what happens is the volume of traffic entering and exiting the apartment complex is not accurately reflected in the traffic study. The traffic study is only looking at wintertime activity, and it's vastly different between May to October. Traffic such as deliveries, maintenance, repairs, people driving, kids to schools, families visiting, the amount of traffic in and out of just this one entrance and exit into the apartment complex is not reflected in the numbers provided. Traffic is going 35 miles per hour uphill, and when you have a bend in the road such as this, it's very blinding, and you have traffic making a left-hand turn, 35 miles an hour, that are going to have to stop quickly because there is no dedicated right-hand turn for the apartment complex, folks, to enter and exit out of their complex. So we're going to be slamming on our brakes because somebody's going to inch their way up on a bend and try and make a right-hand turn into this complex. Second of all, the speed going 35 miles an hour is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 75 feet. That's very difficult when people are making left-hand turns very quickly in a glob of vehicles and trying to drive up to Quailwood to the residence. Traffic from Department of Transportation has shown that this is already high-volume traffic, 400 to 500 vehicles, and there is no entrance being used at the Dollar Store because of this volume being too high. So now we have a single lane that Quailwood residents, 1,900 homes for residents, have to slam on their brakes where it was free-flow with making the left-hand turn, and you could drive up and cross the bridge to get home. Now they're going to be stopping and trying to work their way around a complex with a right-hand turn entrance. Because of the single lane, the Quailwood homeowners, what's in place now is a traffic flow that is not inhibited. With a right-hand turn lane that's not dedicated, so there's two lanes, one for the Quailwood residents to continue and one for the apartment complex.
Your time's expired.
It's impaired.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Ron Smith. I'm a Quailwood resident. I'm not sure whether a couple of things are clear. To begin with, Bradshaw Mountain Road is the only way in or out of there. Also, no matter what improvements Dorn has made, it doesn't change the fact that at one point, you hit a two-lane bridge, which is a natural checkpoint. With the amount of people that are already there, if there's a fire emergency, for example, you've already got a problem, and adding hundreds of more cars is only going to make that worse. Lastly, this is an article that I took out of the local paper a couple of weeks ago, Stone Ridge, A Priority For Evacuation Plans, and I'm wondering whether anybody's done any work on Quailwood for evacuation plans. Again, I don't think they've addressed my concerns. I think it's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Ronald Reimer, and I live in Quailwood, too. I have no objections with Dorn Homes building their site there, with the exception of the road that they want to add in. It seems like to me they should be able to put it down to that next stop and go light that's there. Our subdivision is about 2,000 homes, and that's what I've been told at the community center. And it's 2,000 homes, and you think about 2,000 homes, there's at least 4,000, maybe 5,000 people living in that area, and it's the only exit that we have. But I lived in a subdivision before I came here. I lived there for 40 years, and they had four exits. Now, Quailwood Homes has got this thing that they put up for emergency exits, in case there was a fire or something like that, but I looked at them, and they're almost ridiculous unless you have a four-wheel-drive truck. I mean, there's no way that you're going to drive in the back part of that subdivision and go to the Fane Road or 169 the way they designed right now. And I really believe our subdivision deserves, and if the community is really thinking about the people that live in this area, we need to have a road in the back of our subdivision that will go to either Fane Road or 167. Since I've been here about, I haven't been here quite two years, but there's been a major fire a year and a half ago where 169 was closed, and all the traffic was backed up to Fane Road, and there's been several accidents since I've been here where the traffic has been backed up all the way to Fane Road. And then I believe we have a fire station that's on 169 that comes over to our place to get into our subdivision. Well, if that's all closed and everything else, there's no way the fire department's even going to get there. So those are my main issues. I really believe we need an exit, at least one more exit out of the subdivision, and I don't think that the way they want to design that thing is going to help anything with all the traffic that goes through there. It should be down further south where that next stop and go light is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, could you repeat your name again, please? Could you repeat your name again, please?
My name, Ronald Reimer.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Lauren Miller from Quailwood also. It's L-O-R-E-N-M-I-L-L-E-R. I too am not pleased where they're proposing their arterial road. It's too close to the bridge, which is curved. On the south side of the bridge is a rather high railing, and with that and the grade of their proposed arterial, that is going to have obstructed view for both these egressing, trying to get out of there. Neither one's going to be able to see oncoming traffic. That's all I want to say about that.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Brian Langill. I'm a homeowner in Quailwood as well. Appreciate you guys taking the time to do this. First, I wanted to say, through you to them, I wanted to say condolences to the loss of his mother, and also that I appreciate you guys taking the time to really listen to, you know, you may not have answered all our questions, but you really took the time to listen to us and to relook at that whole project, and I appreciate that. I'm assuming, is the first, I'm not quite sure if the first phase and the second phase are the same. Are they the same single-story units?
We can have that addressed, sir.
Okay, okay. My main concern is that I don't see the employment opportunities within the area to substantiate more rental housing in the area. There may be more opportunities up the road, farther up into Prescott Valley, but that just adds more traffic flow going up in already challenging roadway at times, especially in the morning, when everybody's trying to get up there and go to work. I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed in concept to the project, and I think, especially the way that it's being looked at now, I think is much more attractive and much more reasonable than the first attempt at that, and I appreciate that. I also, if possible, would like to see another access road out of the project somewhere. It looked like a road was being built that would eventually attach to Highway 169, but I'm assuming that's going to happen way in the future somewhere as other development occurs. It's not going to happen with this project, so that doesn't really answer that question. So anyway, that's my concerns and thoughts, and appreciate you taking the time to listen to me.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
My name is Berta Richmond, and I live...
Go ahead and lower the microphone. There you go.
My name is Berta Richmond, and I live in Quailwood, and I have for 10 years. I'm in the townhomes, and I too am echoing the same concerns, basically, is the entrance and exit out of our community and what it's going to do with this additional amount of people living in the newer community that they want to have built. And so I would like to have some kind of consideration as a longtime resident of Quailwood, that our concerns be taken more seriously about this situation, about emergency entrance and exit, and the only way in for any emergency vehicles, should we have something in the way of a fire or whatever, or trying to get to people that are needing help with this, you know, with this additional amount of people coming in, moving into this new project. I have no problem with the new project. I just have a concern that we're not being represented, and should actually be even before this concern with this new project, that we have another... before this concern with this new project, that we have another exit and entrance into our community as large as it is. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Esther Falls. I've been a resident of Quailwood for 13 years. We're very proud of our area, and I don't object. I was a realtor in another, in Arizona, but in another community, and I'm very aware of how people view different things in their community. My concern is the traffic specifically, and also with the children that we have coming up from across the highway, from the middle school. We have a lot of middle school kids, and yeah, they're older, they're not babies. However, they have skateboards, they have bicycles, and with the amount of traffic that we already have, that is a big concern with me. My other concern is because of the majority, I guess I could say, of the residents are over 55. In here, we have a lot of elderly people, including myself, and it's kind of scary. And I have been up, I've walked all over the neighborhood, I've walked up behind, and people say, "That is not a place to put an emergency road." I was here last, or two years ago when we had the fire danger, and Quailwood was pre-evacuation. And we had relatives, I have family that lives up off of Kachina, and we didn't, couldn't have them at our house because eventually we would have probably had to be evacuated. So they went to Unit 19 instead. It's a very real concern, and that area in, I think it's the villages, where the little road goes over, it's hardly more than a little bitty creek, and I can't see having 500, 600 people trying to cross that in the event of a fire. I think, and the other last thing is, I've been driving since I was 15 and 1/2, and I have never had so much as a parking ticket. I'm proud of my record. However, every time I get out on Bradshaw Road and I want to go into PV, all the traffic from Wednesday through Sunday, all that traffic coming up from Phoenix, it's just car after car after car, and they run that red light. And I stand there, I have to look to the left, I look to the right before I cross, make sure nobody's coming, and I look again to the left because for, four out of five times, somebody's running through that light. And I did talk to somebody from zoning-
I was expired.
Okay. I talked to someone from zoning, and they agreed with me that people do not go 55, what the speed limit is on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the commission on these items? All right, seeing none, I will close public hearing on these items and bring it back to the commission. Are there any questions of staff? I know I have a few things, but are there any questions of staff from my fellow commissioners? You guys? Yeah, I was going to, yeah. So the two, of course, the two biggest things that came up were traffic concerns, emergency evacuation routes, and of course, the question with regard to Phase One and Phase Two being the same. That we can reserve for the applicant unless Gary, you can answer that. Just wondering if staff can address for the commission the traffic concerns a little bit more, as well as the future plans and kind of maybe a possible timeline for future growth and road development in that area. And also, I know the town's emergency evacuation plan is in progress. What maybe, what some of the things are going on with that with regard to the Quailwood area?
Yes, thank you. I'll start with the emergency evacuation plan. We had an open house just last week here in this building talking about the plan that our staff has developed to identify locations where emergency access points can be used in case of an emergency, those that are available, those that need to be planned. The ones in the Quailwood area, it was referred to before, there is a existing one that crosses the Awafree River into the golf course, back into the villages. That exists right now as an alternative egress for the Quailwood area. With any future development of the Quailwood area off to the east, we would be working with the developer to get an additional access down to Highway 169 as well from that area directly without having to cross the, without having to cross the river. So those are our points that were highlighted in the plan that we presented to the public last week. Again, as I presented in the proposal, the Phase One would include, under our conditions, an access road built to fire standards existing with Phase One that would access out to Highway 69, and that would be served, that would serve both phases of this project as well. So that would be an alternative that could be used specifically for this project. For traffic issues, the, I believe the developer has their, has some information on that, may have their traffic engineer here as well to go over in detail. We did have some discussion in the staff report, I believe it's towards the bottom of Page Five, kind of encapsulating what was discussed in that traffic impact analysis, but I'll leave it to the engineers to give you the details on that.
Also, real quick, Gary, maybe a possible timeline on some of the additional or future road improvements? I know it's, you know-
Right, as I mentioned in the staff report, the rest of the access or the arterial road, the continuation of Village Way, that would be done as it would be done with this one in conjunction with additional development as it occurs down that corridor towards Highway 169. This piece would be done by this developer, would be half of that, that four-lane eventually right-of-way. This would be two lanes and going down to temporary turnarounds at both the Phase One and the Phase Two access when they're built.
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay. No, definitely. Please, please come up and then, you know, if you have anything to add with regard to the traffic.
I'm going to turn over some of these detailed questions to Jeff Kreitzer, and then our traffic engineer is here. Ironically, she was stuck in traffic, so she's here safe and sound.
Speeding on 69, I'm sure.
Good evening, chairperson and commissioners and ladies and gentlemen. Just a couple of comments I wanted to address-
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Jeff Kreitzer, Dorn Homes. Just one question I wanted to address is, a gentleman asked about the phasing, so both phases are all single-level product, maximum height 18 feet, so no difference between the, no difference between the phases.
Thank you.
And I did want to address the concern that we did listen. We did listen very intently to the first neighborhood meeting where traffic was the main concern by reducing our access, reducing the number of units that we're doing, adding widening of road to get people out of the neighborhood, adding an emergency access or an emergency exit to this project so that in case of an emergency, the people in this development will have another way out, will not have to get onto Bradshaw Mountain Road to leave to help clog that. And we also did propose the widening of the project. Neither of these things were in our first plan, so we did listen to the Quailwood residents. We do care, and that was a main concern in our redesign of the project. We do have our traffic engineer who is a little more well-versed than I am in that regard, and she can kind of address the traffic study when it was done and the details of the study.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. My name is Toby White. I work with this engineering firm, SifTech, in Scottsdale, and most of you know me, I've been around for a while. And yes, I do apologize for being late. I was not speeding on 69. I was in, at the passenger of a car sitting on the 15-mile backup on I-17. So yes, we did the traffic study, and we did, we actually did two traffic studies. The first study was based in part on traffic count data that was collected at the end of 2017, and it was collected at a busier time of the year, but having heard the reasonable requests of the neighbors, we went back out the second time around, and we actually had brand-new data collected, and that was in March of this year. So we counted 69, 69 in Bradshaw, Bradshaw-
Let me stop you real quick. So specifically in 2018, what month did you do the traffic count?
2017, we did-
Oh, 2017, okay.
The first time we did it, the counts were, and they ranged from November to, yes, they were, excuse me, they were primarily in November, but it was in a holiday week. We'd like to do them when, you know, when school's in session and not during the Christmas season.
Okay.
But this next time around, we did them. There were some concerns about them being during that season because the press is a little chilly, so we did them in March, and I was up here actually during that time period that the counts were being performed, and it was a nice sunny day.
And when was that, what year?
That, in 2019.
2019, that's, so those, that was just March 2000?
Those recent studies are based on 2019 counts. I'm not sure what's already been discussed. Traffic can get a little dry if there are, I'd rather ask you to ask me questions and see how I can answer those.
Are there any questions of the commission?
So in the egress and out of the project, the lanes that are going to be added for the people coming out of the project to turn, they would be making a left onto 69. There'll be a turn lane for them to come on to Bradshaw Mountain, but there'll be also an additional lane that allows the people coming out of Quailwood to bypass that or not be in conjunction with it. Am I understanding that right?
Yes, to the extent that the applicant could widen Bradshaw to its ultimate condition, all of that's being added. So right now, you know, you're still somewhat constrained by the bridge, so the bridge is not being widened, but there is some room between where the bridge ends and the new driveway is going to be, and there'll be a central lane, and then there'll be two westbound lanes, if that makes sense. So that, the idea being widened enough so that in a worst-case scenario, there's not anticipated to be much traffic turning left that's coming from the Quailwood community and turning left into this apartment complex, but in the occasion that that happens and someone is behind them and doesn't want to wait, there'll be adequate room for them to move around. Also, when people come out of the, driving onto Bradshaw Mountain Road, there'll be like a, similar when you have like a two-way left-turn lane, so there should be, there would be some pavement there that could, you know, that's not the ideal situation that you want people sitting there, but it will be out of the flow of westbound traffic. And we're still, remember, we're talking about a road that's posted at 30 miles, like 30 miles an hour. I have it in my study, but, and that there's a traffic signal right up ahead, and it's not like people on Bradshaw Mountain Road have that, they don't have the green most of the time. It's mostly the south, so I think it's quite a bit of capacity improvement over what's there today.
My other question came up, there's, as Bradshaw Mountain Road exists today, is there a sidewalk on either side of that road coming into Quailwood?
I believe there is one on the south side. I could look back through my study, but maybe-
One on the south side?
Yeah, because I think the south side is pretty much finished, which is why the widening also would be all the way to the north. I mean, it's pretty, there's trees, sidewalk, there's, I know there's carbon gutter, there's utilities, so it's all going to be widened.
And for the staff, then, that crossing there on that sidewalk coming across the entrance into this project will be handled in an appropriate manner.
Yes, any improvements that are made by the developer would be reviewed and permitted through our Public Works Department.
Will there be anything separating the inbound lanes and the exit lanes, such as jersey barriers or anything of that nature?
On Bradshaw Mountain Road?
Yeah.
No, there won't. There's, there'll be a lane separation between them, which is more than what's out there now. If you're kind of can visualize the area, there's the Dollar Store on the south side. So right now, if you're coming out of Quailwood, there's not even really a defined left-turn bay for, so this will extend that so there can actually be a defined left, painted left-turn lane.
Got to make a lot of difference.
But no raised median.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant of the commission? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for zoning map change 19-001. So is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ZMC 19-001, subject to the conditions from staff.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mussera?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Deskey?
Aye.
Commissioner Yader?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Aye.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Aye. Moving on to public hearing item number two and preliminary development plan, in conjunction with that, I'll read them both into the record. Zoning map change 19-002, upon the application of TTH Investments LLC, a request for zoning map change from R2-2 Residential Multi-Joaling Units to RS Residential and Services on lots 27, 28, and 29, Prescott Country Club Unit 1, located on the northeast corner of Old Chisholm Trail and Arabian Lane. Coming that is upon the PDP 19-00, no, excuse me, that is, that's another one, sorry, my apologies.
No PDP, correct.
That's the next one, sorry.
Yep, correct, great.
So go for it, Joe, my apologies.
Great, right, thanks. So, location of the property is, location is shown on the exhibit, and the subject lots are part of the Prescott Country Club Unit 1, developed in Yount Pike County in 1969. In 2004, town of Prescott Valley annexed approximately 150 acres of residential commercial property that included Track B of the Prescott Country Club Unit 1, which is adjacent to the subject property of this rezoning action. At that time, 2.6 acres of that Track B that was previously annexed is also owned by the applicant, TTH Investments. So this exhibit here shows this Track B that was originally annexed, and this property that is hatched here is currently owned by TTH Investments, and this is the property that was recently annexed and is a subject of the rezoning action. So recently, the applicant purchased a building that has been occupied as a church on lots 27, 28, and also vacant lot 29, and lots 25 and 26 that were used for church parking and which is the intent, with intent to develop a daycare facility and all the property to be leased out. The building, staff feels, is well-suited for such a use that it has multiple classrooms and that existed, and it does not lend itself really to a residential use the way it's laid out. The owner preferred to be part of the town along with their other property in the town of Prescott Valley, limits to be able to connect to the town sewer. And that sewer line is again shown here that comes in out by the highway and also joins the back of the property. Again, this was developed 2007, and in the town limits. Lots 20 through 29 were annexed into the town of Prescott Valley with approval of Ordinance 860, the Town Council, on March 14, 2019, with the adoptive zoning of RS and R2 zoning that was the zoning that was similar, most similar existed in the county at the time. The property contained the church, lots 27 and 28, and vacant 29. The property contained the church, lots 27 and 28, and vacant 29 are zoned R2, which allowed for the church by right but doesn't allow for the daycare facilities of over 10 children. So the property needs the RS zoning district, which allows for such uses. Again, daycare facilities of 10 or fewer children are allowed by the state law in any residential district and residential structures subject to building codes and state licensing. But again, over 10 does allow the, does require the RS zoning district. So lots 25 and 26 are presently zoned RS and was the parking lot for the church and will be the same for the daycare. Adjacent lots to the east and across the street to the south on Arabian Lane are zoned R2 with multiple dwelling units. Lots across the street to the west of Old Chisholm are zoned R1L for single-family residents. Lots to the north, lots north of 25 and 26 along the east side of Old Chisholm Trail, extending to Country Club Boulevard. Of that property, there are three lots zoned R2. 10 of the lots are zoned RS with seven of those having various office uses. And that was better illustrated here on Exhibit A, showing the RS property that extends along Old Chisholm Trail on the east side up to the Country Club Boulevard. Now, the building itself is approximately 2,000 square feet and will contain seven rooms. Excuse me, the daycare will be state-licensed per Arizona Administrative Code and Arizona Revives statutes for childcare facilities. Applicant has stated that number of children will be somewhere around 40 full-time children and some after-school care and could be expanded to 59 students with four or five employees. Daycare is usually open Monday through Friday. The building isn't restricted to those days and hours are typically from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. There is currently a four-foot chain-linked fence that was put into place for a play area on the east side of the building that's approximately 40 by 55 feet. The fencing is contained on Lot 28 and is therefore about 80 feet, which is the width of Lot 29 from the nearest residential property and dwelling. That's illustrated here, the fence area and Lot 29. Fencing is regulated in Section R9-5-603C, outdoor activity areas of the Arizona Administrative Code of the Arizona Revives statutes for daycare facilities. And the existing fence meets those standards and that it's a minimum of four feet high, secure to the ground, and has openings that don't exceed four inches. It's been reported that the Prescott Country Club HOA has asked for the play area to be fenced with solid six-foot masonry wall for noise mitigation. The current fencing is allowed by the state and staff suggests it is appropriate distance from the facility to adjacent residential uses. The current business will operate on lots 26, 27, 28. Lot 29 is vacant, provides a buffer from the play area. Per the conditions of rezoning, Lot 29 may be utilized in conjunction with the primary use of the existing building or developed as a separate residence per the RS district, but would not be developed as a standalone business. And also, there's no access provided to the business on Arabian Lane. It has been reported to me that there were some ongoing discussions with the HOA and the eventual operator of the business as to what a proper fencing might be. But again, staff feels the existing fence yard is, meets the requirements. Because of concern of the neighborhood, a traffic impact statement was prepared for the proposed daycare facility. Estimates are based on the maximum enrollment of 59 students, which is inclusive of parents and teacher trips. It's estimated to generate a total of 241 maximum daily trips, vehicle in trips, 46 in trips, 24 in and 22 out during AM peak hours, and 47 trip-ins, which would be 22 in and 25 out during the PM peak hours. Assuming the projected estimate, student enrollment of 40, it's estimated to generate closer to instead 164 daily vehicle trip-ins and generate 14 less AM and 15 less PM hour trip-ins, which is well below the town's 100-vehicle peak hour threshold identified requiring a traffic impact analysis. So, overall, the planned daycare facility is anticipated to generate a low number of peak hour trip-ins. The vehicle trips to and from the site are anticipated to be distributed to both Prescott Country Club Boulevard and Bradshaw Mountain Road, for the minimizing impacts any one roadway segment on Old Chisholm Trail. In the most extreme conditions, that assumes all new vehicle trips being generated from outside the community and using Prescott Country Club Boulevard, trail intersection will continue to operate at acceptable service levels. Was a neighborhood meeting held by the applicant on March 5, 2019, with properties within 1,000 feet being invited by first-class mail. It is reported that seven persons attended. A summary meeting was provided to you and your packet and including some correspondence at the time from property owners. Since that time, staff has not received any follow-up comment since that report was provided, except one phone call today asking about the meeting. General plan designation is low-density residential, which supports the RS zoning district for the general plan table LU4. The property is now in the town limits and the property is required to be connected to the town sanitary sewer system. The RS district allows for R2 district uses along with personal services, professional office uses, public and private schools, along with daycare facilities. Location is adjacent to existing RS and R2 zoning and is an appropriate transition. A traffic statement was prepared by a registered professional, analyzed impacts of daycare facilities on existing traffic conditions. Staff supports the proposed rezoning from R2 to RS on lots 27, 28, and 29 for the proposed daycare facility. Recommends that ZMC be approved and forwarded to the council with a recommendation for approval with the conditions in your brief. With that, I will ask for any questions. And the applicant and owners here understand also the proposed tenants that would be operating the business. So with that-
Thank you, Joe. Any questions of the Commission of Staff? Charlie?
Question I have is the intent to have this as a daycare facility. If you're approving, if this gets approved, could it possibly change from a daycare facility to some other professional use?
As it's currently proposed, if there was, if that was terminated for some reason, another RS use allowed in the RS district could be allowed if there are no other conditions placed on it.
So there's a possibility that it could not be a daycare facility if this is approved?
The way, if it changed or terminated, the way the RS district could be another RS use, unless there were other limitations put on it, yes. The way it's currently proposed, there are no limitations on that. Future uses allowed in the RS.
Any other questions of staff?
Now, real quick, just a clarification question, Joe, I know the answer, but just for the record. So the roads, Old Chisholm Trail and Arabian Lane are not in the town limits, those would be maintained by the county, correct?
Correct, that's a county road. The county did review, look at this traffic study and had no, agreed with the conclusions and had no other conditions or comments on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll ask the applicant to come up.
My name is Tim Hendrickson. I own TTH Investments. We're a small real estate company here in Prescott Valley, Prescott, and we own a few buildings around town. This is a building I acquired. It's adjacent to more property that I own next door that I hope someday to develop. Bought the building without any idea what to do with it. I was approached by a daycare, I already have a couple buildings that daycare's occupy. I seem to do real well with them. They're not hard on the buildings, they just seem to, seem to work. It's, my kids used to live in the neighborhood, my grandkids lived in the neighborhood until recently. I just, I kind of like it down there in Dewey.
Are there any questions of the applicant from the Commission? All right, seeing none, we'll open the floor to the public comment, public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to, for public hearing on zoning map change 19-02. Again, if you can just, you know, do a line, instead of just raising your hand, just go ahead and, you know, stand here in the middle, that would be great. And please state your name for the record, please speaking to the microphone. We'll go from there.
Okay, my name is Al Solinsky. I'm a director with the Prescott Country Club Property Owners Association. And at my side is Jennifer Lynch. She's the Property Owners Association Board Secretary. I have a few comments I'd like to make.
Go ahead and speak a little bit closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors and also on behalf of the residents of the Prescott Country Club. Residents are concerned about the impact to their property values should this rezoning take place. Some have expressed selling and moving prior to the proposed facility going into operation. Residents have voiced concerns about the proposed rezoning regarding increased traffic into the community. The previous occupancy of the property was a church with a minor impact to the community mainly on Sundays. The proposed occupancy for a child daycare facility will be a daily impact to traffic mornings and evenings. The Prescott Country Club is primarily a retirement community and there'd be most likely very few residents that'd be utilizing the facility. Is this really a good fit for a retirement community? Utilization of the facility would most likely come from surrounding communities such as Quailwood and bring in increased non-resident traffic. Adjacent properties are concerned about the noise as the facility is proposing an outdoor playground. The playground will have a four-foot chain-linked fence. If this project is approved, we are requesting a six-foot fence for sound mitigation purposes. Jen, you want to say something?
Hi, so a couple of things that we would like to really discuss regarding the fence, because I know that's a big issue, outside of traffic being a big issue. The fencing, and I just want to give it just a quick, I was a 10-year daycare, licensed daycare provider out of the state of Michigan, I'm also a parent. And as both of those things, it's really concerning that we are opening a daycare center with the absolute minimum requirement for fencing and that's what is housing our daycare kids and, again, they're just going with the minimum. A good compromise for the community would be the block fence for two reasons. One would be sound mitigation for the neighbors directly in that path. And also, I personally feel it is a safety and privacy issue for the children. That is a very exposed area, you can see it from the highway. Again, I think that the children should be in private, they should not be exposed with that tiny, small fence and it should be something a little bit higher. So that's really my concern with the fence. We're not really picking on him, we are really concerned about the children and our neighbors.
Thank you both for your comments.
I got, I got more.
We have, it's three minutes, so-
Okay, well, I thought we could split it and we'd get six minutes.
No, no splitting, but I can, I'll let you finish your-
Okay, this property is within the jurisdiction of the Prescott Country Club POA and we have guidelines that require the approval of the Architectural Review Committee for any modifications to the exterior of the property. The committee has stated a requirement of a six-foot sound mitigation fence and we expect this to be complied with. Our rules and regulations, you know, overrule anything that anybody else does. Residents voiced concern about traffic safety, I think we talked about that. I'm going to read some things out of the town of Prescott Valley code under 1311-010. "The purpose of residential service district is provide for orderly and compatible development in transitional areas between residential and non-residential while minimizing the undesirable impact of such uses in the neighborhoods which they service." Under 1311-060, landscaping, screening, outdoor lighting, nuisances and hazards, landscaping and screening, outdoor lighting, nuisance hazard provisions of this article shall apply to parking areas. And I don't think anything was addressed in the recommendations from zoning as it relates to the parking area. Now, there's residential directly across the street. Landscape requirements, all parking areas with eight or more spaces shall be buffered from the street view by one or more of the combination of the following, a decorative or solid 100% obscuring screening walls to block from the residences across the street, materials and finishes, and construction design compatible with the building on the site. An exception to that is with a hedge of dense shrubbery that has to be X amount of feet high. I'm kind of skimming through this, you can read the code on that. And this is from the town of Prescott Valley. "The purpose of screening provisions is to separate incompatible uses, conceal objectionable areas, and buffer intense activities. Screening for protection of adjacent properties. Screening provisions listed below apply to developers of non-residential as follows. A solid screen wall shall be installed at a height of six feet above grade of the contiguous property for the following uses, commercial and non-residential uses when such uses are contiguous to a residential area."
Your time has expired, it's been six minutes.
But we're concerned about this sound mitigation and adjacent properties.
Thank you.
And the last thing I need to really, that's really important-
Sir, I need to ask you, I need you to, I need you to sit down and we'll let others speak, thank you.
Okay, Lot 29. Okay, Jennifer wants to add something.
Please have a seat and we'll let others speak, thank you.
Yeah, cut me off.
My name is Carol McKinney and I live about four houses down from where the daycare center wants to be. I moved there 16 years ago and the main reason for moving to that area is because it's a nice quiet area. We drove around there on the roads for many times looking for a place. And had we seen there was a daycare on our corner, we would have not been moving there. So, once the daycare comes in, it'll no longer be a nice quiet community for the people that live immediately around the area. And we are a retired community. I've never heard of a daycare center being in a community like ours or like Quailwood or anywhere. And I think this is very unusual and should not be allowed. Also, like he stated, most of the kids aren't going to be coming from our area. There's going to be a lot of outside traffic. And there's already a lot of traffic on Chisholm Road, which will be their main road for traveling in. I drive that road all the time because that's how I get to my house. And I can tell you right now, there's a lot of speeders on that road and that's not safe for the children. I can't even believe that you think this is a good area, the person that's going to have the business. He's not thinking about the children, being close to such a high-traffic area. And I travel that road, I go to yoga three times a week and the traffic, sometimes I sit and wait and wait at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, like 10 cars or eight cars or whatever, but there's a lot of traffic down that road. And the other thing I would like to say is, are we going to have a say when this daycare center, if it doesn't go in or last, are we going to have a say what else he puts in our community? Because I sure think we should be allowed that. And the other thing is, let's see. I guess what I would like to ask you, would you like to have a daycare center in your community if you lived in a community like ours with the majority retired people? And especially as close as I live to it, I'm going to listen to the child's voices and their outside voices five days a week. So, we want to open our door, we'll want to shut our door instead. And that's why I feel I have a voice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Diana Staley and thank you for allowing me an opportunity. My husband and I were one of the seven people who attended the little informal get-together at the first part of March. We didn't get anything by mail and this has all been here save for us. And thank goodness for next door because that's where we hear about it. We are the first house on Chisholm. And when you turn on our street, it is an extremely busy street. And I'm glad they did a traffic impact study. And maybe they didn't have to and maybe in the big scheme, it's not a lot of vehicles, but when you're trying to get out of your driveway and you're waiting 10, 15 minutes or more because of the stop sign, because of all the traffic coming through, it's a light. Also, I've worked emergency management for a lot of years. If you have an evacuation and you've got 50, 59 kids in there, you're going to double increase, triple increase the amount of traffic. Parents trying to get to their kids, get them out, get them in, emergency vehicles trying to get in there, you've even doubled the headache even more. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Moore. I am a resident. I actually live up on the hill that looks down on this proposed area. In fact, from our patio, from our deck, we have a complete view of the proposed playground area. And one of the biggest concerns I have is we get a horrendous amount of noise from the Mexican restaurant that is, of course, just off of 69. Sound travels up. It doesn't matter if you have a three-foot fence or a six-foot fence. We have a tremendous amount of noise that comes. I was a little bit concerned when I heard there'd be a daycare center. I was thinking there might be 15, 20 kids. When I hear there might be 40 and possibly up to 59, that is a lot of children. And so, I voiced some of the same concerns. The noise level is going to be much, much louder than I ever expected. We've been residents 17 years and we moved in this community for the peace, the serenity, the quiet area. We knew it was a retirement area. We never envisioned having a potential daycare center. Also, as voiced before, if the daycare center doesn't work, what is going to come in afterwards? Most of the, they're professional businesses on, off of, on Old Chisholm Road. Nothing like what a daycare center would be and the children that would be there. Also, on Lot 29, that is, it's kind of an open suggested area right now. We don't really know what that would be because all the, we've talked about the Lot 27, 26, and 25. There's a resident right next to 29. Every adjacent property right now is a dwelling for housing, for living, not a business. And so, I voiced the same concerns as the others. The traffic would be increased horrendously. And I would voice my strong opinion, or at least you would consider our suggestions, not to have a daycare center there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Greg Staley and my wife just came up and talked and we live right on that corner of Country Club and Old Chisholm Trail. And I want to say I'm against this daycare center and I agree with everybody, what everybody said about the traffic and the impact because it's just going to be a nightmare, just a nightmare. But what I don't think anybody has really taken into consideration is the amount of people that walk up and down that street. So, you add all that traffic, plus the pedestrians that are out there walking their dogs. And many of these retired folks are out there walking their dogs early in the morning when people are going to be showing up to drop off their kids. They're walking their dogs or taking walks in the afternoon. You've got kids in the afternoon walking along that street. There are no sidewalks whatsoever. So, then you add all this additional traffic, it's just going to be a nightmare. I mean, there is a real risk that somebody's going to get hit. Some kid or some elderly person is going to get hit by a car because people go zipping by. And if, you know, I've been a parent, like many of everybody in here, you're busy, you're going to work, you've got to drop off your kids, it could be a real problem. So, I would just ask the commission, just take that into consideration that this is just a terrible idea, not only from the traffic perspective, but also from the effect that it could possibly have on pedestrians. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is John Jamison. I live on Old Chisholm Trail, just a few doors down. And I can attest that that's a small road. It's just two lanes. It's a racetrack. I'm one of those guys that walks the dogs along there in the morning. And I just can't see a need for more commercial property. We do, we are a residential community. We do have some commercial, which is right across the street from me, and that creates quite a bit of traffic by itself. When I think of these children coming to school or coming to preschool in the morning, I think of the parents that are dropping them off. You think they might be in a hurry because they've got to go to work? So, they're going to be speeding down that road too to get those kids dropped off. And then they're going to be speeding out of there to get to work on time. So, I'm just opposed to any more commercial there at all. That road is just too narrow and it's just not a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission for further discussion and/or motion.
I still have a question. If we are voting for changing this to the daycare, with the daycare center, or just changing it to the commercial?
RS.
Not commercial. My apologies.
Charlie, finish here. Anything else, Charlie?
Residential and services. I have a problem the way this is worded, that if you're approving this, something else besides a daycare center could go in. And I don't know what we're really voting on.
And Commissioner Roberts?
Oh, yeah. My concern, several concerns. One, the aesthetics and the narrow road, that bothers me. And so, that's what my comment is. I'm a little concerned about that.
Okay.
Oh, I do. I'm sorry. I'd like to ask Gary if it's your department, what other businesses could go in there other than the daycare center?
Joe.
Joe, oh, Joe. There you are.
Actually, give me a second, Joe, and then we'll, kind of, we have a bunch of questions here, so let me get some of the questions from the commission.
The gentleman that's developing the property, could you give us some feedback on the block wall for, in lieu of the chain link fence? Please.
I'll get your questions.
And I guess I say that, maybe you're working something out with the people that are going to manage the facility?
Yeah, I think the, you know, we've been in contact with the Country Club. We ran into this situation with them a few years ago where we put a block wall in and they didn't want a block wall. This one was, probably got the cart of, head of the horse a little bit, you know, with the, you know, the, someone at my company installed the, or had the fence installed. Really didn't see, you know, I've spent quite a bit of time in the Country Club. I've got to, you know, my kids live there, my grandkids live there. You know, I think there's school buses that go up and down the streets. So, I mean, to say that there's no kids in the Country Club or to talk about nobody there. But the block wall is, I think it's just, it's just an issue that we're going to work out. We don't have a long history of being very successful with the Country Club, with working with them. We're trying our best, you know, they've, you know, they've made comments that they didn't want to hear the kids. And I'm like, you know, we live on Highway 69, you know, I, you know, I was a little bit insulted by that. You know, I think that, you know, I actually own two more of these already and they, the purpose is that we weren't wanting to enclose the kids in a block structure. We were wanting to have a, you know, an openly thing where they could see out, see the, see the things going on in the neighborhood and stuff like that. The kids are never out there in the playground by themselves. There's always a teacher and instructor with them, you know, in the other two, and I would assume this would be the same. I think it's a, I think it's a pretty compatible use. I don't, I know everybody talks about all the different things that could happen. My other two have been pretty successful and you have one in Prescott Valley now, across from residential, that I've, I'm guessing it's been open a couple of years now. Seems to be, and it came out of a real heavy commercial area into an area similar to this over, I think on Manly Drive. And there's, you know, there's residential across the street. It doesn't seem to be that intrusive. Every time we come against the Country Club guys and their group and stuff like that, they're pretty much against just about every type of development that anybody wants to offer. They're a, they're a pretty, you know, they're a pretty organized group and I, and I get that. They have their rights and they have their stuff. They, I think they'd like for everybody that owns property there not to be able to do anything. I think that, you know, maybe throw away the key kind of attitude. You know, we've, you know, I helped the kids with the golf course there for a number of years and we just, any kind of improvement or any kind of infrastructure, any kind of thing was just fought by, you know, we dealt with the sewer district there for a decade, decade and a half. And it's just, it's just a constant process dealing with them. And I think, I think at a point, they'll get to the, to there where they'll, you know, they'll understand that, you know, improvements are going to come. We're going to, we're still going to build on some of these properties. We're still going to try to make it a little better. I think you're going to see in the next couple of years, you're going to see the property on the front get developed. And I mean, it's just, there's just things coming. They look at themselves as a retirement community and I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that there's, I think there's a number of young people that either live there or would like to live there.
Well, I guess, not arguing that point with you at all. And when I was down on the property, looking at the fence that's down there now, it just seems even with little kids, of some sort of a improvement to that fence that would, I understand being able to see out and so forth, but some sort of an improvement because it, it looks like it's been there for quite a while.
It's brand new.
Is it, it is brand new?
It is brand new.
Oh, okay. I didn't get, I didn't get out and walk up and touch it, so that's...
But I mean, I think the fence is a, is a small item to our thing with the Country Club. I think, I don't know that it would matter if it was the fence or the parking lot or shrubs or anything. I think that it's just, you know, the Country Club has a long history of not really wanting any type of, you know, of improvements or development or something like that. And I, you know, I'm just here to say, I'm going to, I mean, I own several properties there and I'm going to keep working my way through it, trying my best to do it. This is a, this is a real good use. If they fail, probably would have to get another operator just like you to do it. I think it's, it's not really suited for anything maybe but a doctor's office or a, or a daycare or some type of classroom thing or some type of classes or something like that. It's a nice, solid building. It's probably 20 to 30 years old, you know, in the different stages it's built. It's a, it's a nice property and it came with a few extra lots, so we have a little bit of room to spread everything away. I was able to give it a buffer from all the different sides, so I...
Well, thank you, sir. I'm going to have staff come back up and answer Commissioner Musara's and Commissioner Roberts' questions.
I don't have all the uses, but as I explained, the RS is essentially personal services, professional services, all office uses, I mean, no kind of retail. So, I would eventually say most uses, office use would be less intensive than this, but I don't have all the exact, exact uses, but that's office, professional uses generally.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, on the aesthetics, I mean, he ran off a whole bunch of stuff requiring, we go through all that anyway, do we not?
Yeah, well, I would say, I would say with the site plan review, there is a screening requirement for parking. In this case, pointed out that probably have 10 required paid parking spaces and I don't have the final plan yet, but those essentially should fit on Lot 26, anticipated. So, with that, if they're on 26, you're allowed to have up to like a 30-foot driveway. So, what we would do is define, better define that entrance to the allowed entrance width and then that entrance width to the parking area on Lot 26. And then anything beyond the required driveway area, we would condition that required screening would be applied to that parking area other than the allowed driveway entrance. And so, and I would say, and then we could restrict the entrance from Lot 25 and have the primary entrance on Lot 26.
And Joe, you know, some of the other properties on Old Chisholm to basically kind of heading towards Prescott Country Club Boulevard are currently, you know, you have the POA office and a few, you know, businesses in there. Those are zoned with the county zoning, correct?
Correct.
But with town zoning, if they were annexed and so forth, would that technically be considered RS? Those properties that are current, that are currently in commercial along Old Chisholm, would that be considered RS at that point in time or C, or commercial?
Well, no, the county zoning is RS. I mean, so, as indicated, so it's the same, pretty much essentially the same as RS. So, again, the uses that are allowed now in the county RS are very similar to what the, would be allowed in this RS, the same office uses, professional, no retail type of uses.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions?
I personally think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this and my feeling would be not to put it up for a vote and to have the town or the developer come back with clear what he really wants to do or what...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see a further amplification of the exact application. The things of, Gary, with all due respect, you know, we could do this and we could do that. If I'm going to vote on something, I want to know what it is we're going to do. And I dealt with Prescott Country Club on both sides of that coin and I understand your statements there. I've been on both sides, but I will tell you that I think this one's pretty loosey-goosey and I'd like to see something a little more concrete.
And I would agree with you, Commissioner Dusky. The way that this is written right now, I would be a no vote if this would actually be sent to a vote. If the other commissioners are, you know, I'm hearing that, I mean, yes, you want to... Okay, I would actually rather see it tabled for...
I agree with Rick and everybody else up here. I'm going to use a very non-professional comment. I'm going to say probably this whole thing should be washed, washed out.
Could you?
Yeah, just wash it, wash it out and just take a look at it.
Could you find what the issues are? I mean, maybe give us a list of what the issues are?
So...
What I looked at?
So... Okay.
But what I would be looking for is, are we going to build block walls or not? If so, how high? Where would they be? If not, what are we going to use for screening? Will they use a driveway like was described? If so, how is it actually used? Those kinds of questions, Richard.
All right. Thank you.
I think Richard Parker made it clear that he knows what we need to have done.
Okay. So, with that, let me bring it back to the commission. So, is there a motion to table zoning map change 19-002 for a future date?
I move that we table this.
A nice second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yader?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. All right. So, next on the agenda, and I won't make the same mistake twice, but this one is zoning map change 19-003 and preliminary development plan 19-002, so I'll read both into the record. So, upon the application of Link Development LLC, consideration of a zoning map change from RCU 70 residential conditional use permit to RSPAD residential and services planned area development on approximately five acres located at the southeast corner of Long Look Drive and Viewpoint Drive. And also the preliminary development plan 19-002 upon the application of Link Development LLC, consideration of a preliminary development plan for a proposed senior living facility that would include memory care, assisted living, and independent living on approximately five acres located on the southeast corner of Long Look Drive and Viewpoint Drive. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Gary Davis with Community Development. Property is about five acres located at the southeast corner of Long Look Drive and Viewpoint Drive. The surrounding zoning to the south and...
Viewpoint Drive. The surrounding zoning to the south and east, R2-3 and R2PAD. To the east, there's an existing assisted living facility. To the southeast, there's an existing senior housing facility. To the west is zoning RCU, which is the Bob Edwards Park property. And directly to the north across Long Look Drive is the single-family residential development in unit 19, zoned R1L18. Site plan, again, at the southeast corner of Long Look Drive and Viewpoint, shows approximately 116,000 square foot facility, part of which, shown in the orange here, would be a three-story building, which would include assistant, assisted living as well as independent living. The rest of the building would be a one-story building, which would include dining and memory care. And to the north of that, along Long Look Drive, in the future, the applicant proposes six one-story future cottages. And that would act as a buffer between the single-family neighborhood to the north and this proposed use. In your packet and on the screen is a elevation of what the three-story building would look like. The maximum mean height would be 35 feet. And a summary of the traffic impact statement, impact statement found that this use would generate very little traffic on Long Look or Viewpoint Drive. And as you can see on the graphics, there would be quite a bit of, of capacity left over on both of these roads. Again, the future path for the project would be for the recommendation to be passed on to the town council. Town council scheduled to hear this for the first reading and a public hearing of the zoning map change on the 23rd of this month. And then a second reading and possible adoption of an ordinance could take place on May 23rd, I'm, excuse me, on June 13th. And staff recommends approval. It's congruent with the, with the general plan 2025. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is in the audience to answer more specific questions as well.
On the PDP 19-002, the memory care portion of this facility, will this be an enclosed area of some sort to protect the people that need that sort of care?
I think the applicant can probably address that in more detail. This, the plan does show a courtyard within the memory care facility. You see kind of a donut shape of the building. And, but again, I would, I would leave that to the applicant to describe the use in more detail. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff from the commission?
I had one with regard to traffic, Gary. I don't anticipate a whole lot of traffic out of this site, but my concern is, I mean, I take my daughter to school every morning going southbound on Glassford and Long Look. I will specify, and I've said this before, I believe that is the worst intersection in the town of Prescott Valley. I would prefer to see some improvements to that intersection because, you know, we've just added a, a project on Glassford and Long Look, and now we're adding another project. And again, I just feel that, I mean, granted, we have viewpoint to the south, but that just goes right into Lake Shore at the moment. And so, oh, excuse me, yeah, so, or Civic Center, excuse me, Civic Driver, Harvard Scoadrive, excuse me, Circle Boulevard. But, and so that is my biggest concern right now is, even though I don't think this is going to generate so much traffic, but again, the biggest issue is that intersection is by far the, one of the worst in this town.
And again, I would, I would have the applicant discuss in detail what the, what the traffic impact study said. This type of use does not produce a great deal of traffic at the peak hours. It spreads it out over different times based on shift times as opposed to some other uses that might put hour, put traffic in peak hours. But again, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
At this time, I'll have the applicant come up.
Good evening. Gunnar Langus, Ingram Winston Architects, Rattle, Portland, Oregon. We do a lot of senior housing projects all around the Northwest, quite a bit in Arizona as well. I'm turning 50 today, so I'm not too far off from moving into one of these things.
Well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
To answer the question on the memory care court, we do have an internal court there. It'll have a porch, covered shaded area as well as, we feel the center-looking courtyards are more secure for our residents that are moving in versus a fenced-in outdoor area. We do both, but a lot of times with Link Development, we're doing internal courtyards for memory care.
So would be separated and as...
Yeah, it'd only be memory care residents in that courtyard area with staff. There's, it's a lockable or lockdown facility, so 30 beds of memory care, these folks aren't driving. They aren't leaving the facility. Family members can come and visit, obviously, and maybe take them for a walk, but they're in a secure environment that way. The question on traffic a little bit, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but it does not generate hardly any traffic. And the main kind of key on that is that not everybody gets up at 7:00 in the morning, takes a shower, flushes the toilet, hops in their car and goes to work. So the independent folks that are in here, there's 25 units of independent on the third floor facing the view. They can tend to drive a little bit more initially when they move in. We find that they'll bring that car with them. And then a lot of times it sits in the, in the parking lot until, you know, son or daughter says, hey, it's time to maybe sell that thing. So, and then same with staffing. We aren't, you know, there's 24-hour, I guess, a day staff, but we aren't, everybody's not showing up at 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning. So it's a real soft traffic, you know, generator that way, which makes it a nice buffer. A lot of the sites that we're looking at are in similar-sized towns. It's kind of a niche market. So the need is there. We're really seeing the need in the community for this use. And it really, I guess, from the traffic standpoint, we pushed our access point as far as we could on the one end away from that intersection. And then on the other, because of the curb, we're, we're proposing a midpoint access point there. So we feel it's a pretty good solution site plan-wise in terms of stacking and whatnot. And I believe staff has also made a comment in our pre-apps that we will be doing improvements along those roads. So there is a little bit of asphalt add there, which I don't remember the exact number, not a lot, but there'll be new curb and sidewalk and, and a little bit more roadway. So hopefully that would help a little bit.
Earlier, like I said, I didn't think this, you, you generate a whole lot of traffic.
Yeah.
But still, you know, a big concern just because of proximity.
And you have the park across the way now.
Any other questions of the applicant? Of the commission?
I have no questions.
Yeah, I think we're good. All right. Seeing no other questions from the commission, I'll open the floor to public comment on zoning, the zoning map change and preliminary development plan. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the commission?
My name is Curtis Larson. Thanks for the time. I'm also an industry professional as well. Actually going to be neighbors with them if this works out. I'm the executive director at Glassford Place. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the industry. A lot of the community has also already talked about traffic issues, but I'll touch on that first very briefly. They say that traffic isn't an issue. I have a facility of 39 beds is all. And yes, staff is coming at a staggered rate, but you've got family members coming in all the time during the day. You've got other industry professionals, home health, hospice agencies, things like that, delivery people, FedEx. So there is still quite a bit of traffic that happens. Yeah, it's not the staff or the people living there that are causing the traffic, but there are industry professionals that are coming. There's family members that are coming all day throughout the entire day. So about the industry, yes, Prescott Valley is a retirement community, and a lot of seniors are coming here to retire. There may be a need for senior housing. But one thing, I was here at the meeting a few months back, and I asked them to address this as well, was the issue of staffing. They kind of brushed it off like it wasn't a big deal, but staffing is a huge deal. There's 25-plus already assisted living communities, independent living facilities in the tri-city area. And every single one of those facilities is not fully staffed. When they're not fully staffed, guess who, guess who fills that? It's our residents. It's our seniors of our community that are living there. If they don't have enough staff there to actually take care of their needs, then we're doing them a disservice. So I've kind of gone off my notes, but now I got to figure out what else I have. So to be honest, the, it is true, there, there is a need for the senior living. But if they can address that, I would really appreciate the staffing issues. Because everyone in the industry is short-staffed, and, and it ultimately reflects on, on my residents, on, on everybody's residents, on, you know, our seniors in the community. So I would love to have them explain a little bit about what they plan to do, if they have a plan on bringing in staffing somewhere. Traditionally, what's, what happens here in the industry is that, yes, there are going to be a new building, they're going to be able to, to have little higher wages, so they'll, they'll take people and people will leave, and it will just overall affect the community. So those are some of my main points. And to echo as well, the traffic situation, which has already been beaten to a bloody pulp by the community. But I, I agree with that as well. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close public comments and public hearing on the zoning map change and preliminary development plan and bring it back to the commission. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the commission on the zoning map change or the preliminary development plan? So we'll come back to the PDP. But, so at this point, is there a motion for, to approve zoning map change 19-003?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. All right. Moving on to public hearing item number four, zoning map change 19-004, upon the application of Primary Builders LLC, agent, a request for zoning map change from C2 Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services to RS Residential and Services on lots nine and 10, located at the southwest intersection of Addis Avenue and Baja Circle. Joe?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, 1993, the zoning of a unit 14, shown here, was changed from C1 to C2 with the approval of ordinance 301. As shown here, the zoning along a west, the western portion of Addis Avenue is on the south side of Addis Avenue. On the, to the west is RS, residential services, as is all the lots in unit 18 surrounding unit 24. And those areas are developed with duplexes. Several lots in unit 24 have been developed for commercial uses, but most remain undeveloped. Upon approval of rezoning to RS, the applicant wishes to divide lot 10 and develop two duplexes facing Addis Avenue and develop one on lot nine accessed from Baja Circle. Proposed zoning and use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Purpose of RS zoning district is provided for orderly and compatible development in transitional areas, being residential and non-residential. The RS district allows R2 uses, which is residential, multiple dwelling units as a matter of right. The general plan designation is community commercial. It's consistent with the RS district per general plan 2025, Table LU4. A neighborhood meeting was held on April 8th, 2019. It was reported that no attendees or other inquiries were made for the proposed rezoning. Less last week, the department received one letter of opposition and one in favor, and both those provided to the commission. Staff supports proposed rezoning from C2 Commercial to RS on lots nine and 10, Prescott Valley Unit 24, that the RS district is consistent with the general plan 2025 and surrounding land use and zoning. Staff recommends ZMC 1904 be approved and forwarded to the town council with a recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions. That available for any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions of the commission or staff?
None.
All right. Seeing none, is the applicant here? Come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Robin Fox. I represent Primary Builders. And my whole plan with, you know, as requesting a rezone is to create some more affordable housing for the Prescott Valley area by building some high-quality duplexes. And similar to what the town did on the spouse, you know, corridor, where they converted some of the commercial zoning to multifamily, and there's actually some duplexes being built in that area right now. So I appreciate, you know, your consideration, and thank you.
All right. Any questions of the applicant of the commission? All right. Seeing none, we'll open up the floor to, for public comment under public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to the commission? Come on up, sir.
My name's Tim Miller. I own lot eight, right next to these properties. First of all, downgrading the zoning to RS violates Article 13-14-010, which is the purpose of C2 zoning. If you read that, I urge you to read the, the paragraph. In that paragraph, it states clearly that the location of C2 zoning, let's see, the purpose of C2 Commercial Sales and Services District is to provide for the sale of commodities and the performance of service and other activities in locations for which the market area extends beyond the immediate residential neighborhoods. Downgrading the zoning to allow residents would defeat that purpose in which I purchased the property for. It also would adversely affect the marketability of my property. It would affect the market value of my property, and it could take away zoning rights under C2 zoning. And if you read the zoning rights under C2 zoning, it's not hard to realize that you would not want residential property next to C2 property. Residents are not compatible with C2, C2 zone property, and I strongly urge the town council to reject this application. There's an area along Mesa Road, which does have, which allowed residential property across the street from C2 property. And there's been many, many complaints over the years to the town because of that. And I've known personally of one business owner that his business was disrupted because of complaints where the town allowed residents next to C2 properties and industrial properties. So I strongly urge you not to accept this downsizing, this zoning from C2 to RS. It's not compatible with C2 zoning, the purpose of which I bought that property is because all that property on Long Baja is zoned C2. I sold a property because I could not get C2 zoning and purchased this property many years ago because it's zoned C2. So I thank you for your time.
And sir, I had a question for you. You said you're in lot eight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that south of lot nine there?
Yes.
Joining? And, and currently we're showing it's not developed, is that correct?
It's not developed, but I purchased it with the intent to maybe develop it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on ZMC 19-004. Joe, would you mind coming back up? Would you be able to address the applicant's, excuse me, the gentleman's concerns with regard to what he was stating?
Well, I had, when I sent the letter, it explained that the, you know, this property's not, lot eight's not being rezoned and that it retains all the rights of the C2 commercial district. And again, and we don't, for rezoning shouldn't get, we don't get involved in speculating on the different property values. Again, and that retains all the rights for his property and more. We're considering the land use and the... land use and the, the adequacy of the request, the location.
Okay.
Conformity to the general plan.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, I got a question for you, Joe. That Baja is the only entrance in and out of there, right?
Correct, the Baja, yeah.
Okay, now, and the buildings there is a business, commercial business at the end of Baja?
Correct.
There's also, you have by continuation high schools right there as well.
The what?
You have a by continuation high school. One of the high schools is there.
School down there, too.
The gentleman's looking at, is this right here? Yeah, I know. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Any other questions of staff? All right, I'll bring it back. Any further discussion at all? All right, any, and so, there's no discussion, I'll ask for motion on Z M C nineteen dash zero zero four.
So moved.
Are you in approval?
Yes, approval, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
No.
Commissioner Roberts?
No.
Commissioner Dusky?
No.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Moving on to item number eight, action items. We've already read them into the record, but at this point in time, I'll ask the commission if there's any further questions on P D P nineteen dash zero zero one. That is the application of Grounds Properties LLC. Any other questions of staff or comments?
No.
Seeing none, is there a motion to approve P D P nineteen dash zero zero one?
I'd like to make a motion for us to approve Z M C nineteen, or P D P nineteen dash zero zero one, along with the conditions the staff has put on it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Action number number two, P D P nineteen dash zero zero two. Again, any further questions or comments with regard to the application from Link Development LLC with regard to the memory care assisted living, independent living facility? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve P D P nineteen dash zero zero two?
I'll make the motion. Go ahead. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Item number nine, call to the public, consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the planning and zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Is there anybody wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close call to the public and move to item number ten with, for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.